......
Ikaw pa nauna dito. Kabisado. May di naman kayo? Wala.
Yes, sir. Sumahan po namin si Orly.
You weeks. Sa Orly, kilala niya.
Baka pumalungkot si Orly.
Parang bakka niya. Marami sa place. Marami siya sa place. Highlight.
The second session of the Senate in the first regular session of the twentieth Congress is hereby called order. Chair would like to recognize Senator Joel Villanueva for... To lead the chamber rather in prayer. You may proceed, sir.
Let's put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Dakilang Diyos aman aming sumasalangit. Diyos na may gawa ng langit at lupa. Diyos na nagsabing kung may dalawa o tatlo na nagkatipon sa kanyang pangalan siya ay nasa kanilang kalagitnaan. Kami po ay nagpapakumbaba, nagpapasalamat, kumihingin ng tawad sa anumang pagkukulang, pagkakamali, pagkakasala sa isip, sa salita o sa gawa. Linisin niyo po kami ng iyong banal na dugo na nabuho sa Cruz ng Kalbaryo. At hayahan niyo po na ngayong araw na ito sa aming paglapit maging karapat dapat po kami. Hinihiling po namin ang iyong biyaya, habag at katalinuhan upang magampana namin ang aming mga responsibilidad. At ang pagkakatawag mo sa bawat isa sa amin bilang mga representative ng taong bayan. Tulungan niyo po kami ngayong araw na ito as we open our session and into your hands we commit everything. And we know and we believe that if you are with us, no one and nothing, no circumstances here on earth can be against us. We also pray for our kababaiyans na nabiktima ng bagyo, baha, anuman ang kanilang kalagayan. Yakapin mo po sila ng iyong pagmamahal. I-supply niyo rin po ang kanilang mga pangangailangan. Gamitin niyo rin po kami, lalo na ang aming pamahalaan para kalingain at alagaan po sila. Amin po na, aming po ibinabalik sa iyo o Diyos ang lahat ng kapurihan, kaluwal hatian at pasasalamat sa tangin pangalan ng aming Panginoong Jesus ang lahat po'y makisa at magsabing amen.
Thank you Senator Villanueva. Secretary please call the roll.
Call of members. Honorable Senator Aquino, Senator Kayatano Alan, Senator Kayatano Pia, Senator De La Rosa, Senator Ersito, Senator Estrada, Senator Gachalian, Senator Go, Senator Antiveros, Senator Lacson, Senator Lapid, Senator Legarda, Senator Marcoleta, Senator Marcos, Senator Padilla, Senator Pangilinan, Senator Soto, Senator Tulfo Irwin, Senator Tulfo Rafi, Senator Villanueva, Senator Villar Camil, Senator Villar Mark, Senator Zubiri. The Senate President.
With twenty-three senators present, Chair hereby declares the presence of a call room. Majority floor leader.
Mister President, we have a number of guests present here today. Guests of Senator Marcoleta, Ms. Kathy Binag, guests of Senator Pangilinan, Governor Trina Firmalo and Mayor Rosco Plaza of Nasipit Agusan del Norte, guests of this representation as well. Guests of the Senate, delegation from the Mindanao State University in Marawi headed by Assistant Professor Muhammad Faisal Alonto. Guests of Senator Lapid and this representation, LGU officials of Duero Bohol led by Mayor Altakulad. Guests of Senator Gachalian and Aquino, LGU officials of Infanta Quezon led by Mayor L.A. Ruanto. Guests of this representation, Liga ng Mga Barangay of Camarines Norte headed by Councilor Nell Marfe- Defeo of Talisay, Camarines Norte. Guests of Senator Ersito, Councilor Jeric Reyes and Sangunyang Bayan Secretary Ross Elison of the Municipality of Pateros. And guests of Senator Marcos from Zamboanga City, barangay chairman Michael Umaga, Councilor Elking Umaga and Mister Jervil Umaga. We welcome all of them in this August chamber, Mr. President.
To our aforementioned guests, welcome dear Senate Majority Leader.
Mister President, before we continue, may I take this moment to greet our distinguished colleague? A happy victorious birthday Senator Rodante Marcoleta. May I move for a minute suspension so we can all greet him and remind him of our tradition, Mister President?
To our distinguished colleague, Chair would like to greet him. Happyest of birthdays. Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mister President, I think the Senate President would like to brief the body as to what happened to our caucus this afternoon.
Not to really brief the body but rather place on record the agreement arrived upon in caucus earlier. To set on a date certain the disposition of the matter pertaining to the Supreme Court decision in relation to the impeachment complaint against Vice President Sarah Zimmerman Duterte. For the record, it was agreed in caucus that the matter will be decided upon by the Senate on August 6, 2025 when we open session on that date in order to afford ample and sufficient time to the members to study the ninety-seven page Supreme Court decision excluding the concurring and separate opinions filed by five or six additional magistrates of the Supreme Court. For the record and for the information of all the members of the Senate, some of whom may not have been present when this was agreed upon.
Thank you very much Mister President. Mister President, at this juncture I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal of the First Session Monday, July 28, 2025 and consider the same as approved.
Any objection? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of Senator Zubiri?
Yes Mister President, Mister President, before we approve it, I may have made a mistake on my nomination of Senator, our minority floor leader. He was just for the record, I may have said he was Vice Mayor in 1998, he was Vice Mayor at 1988. And as well as, he was also a minority floor leader, not just a deputy minority floor leader, just to put that on record. Thank you, Mister President.
Noted and accordingly corrected. Thank you Senator Zubiri. Any other reservations on the approval of the Journal? There being none, acting on the motion of the Majority Floor Leader, the aforementioned Journal is hereby approved.
Mister President, with the permission of the body, I move that we proceed with the reference of business. So moves, Mister President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Secretary General is directed to comply.
Bills on first reading, Senate Number One, Anak Aproving the Sum of Seventy-four Billion Four Hundred Thirty-One Million Nine Hundred Thirty Thousand Pesos. A supplemental appropriations of fiscal year 2025 and for other purposes, Senator Ersito.
To the committee on rules.
Senate Bill Number Two, Mandating the Formulation and Institutionalization of a Comprehensive Infrastructure Development Master Plan. Establishing the Master Plan for Infrastructure and National Development Mine Council, appropriating funds for Senator Ersito.
To the committees on Economic Affairs, Public Works and Finance.
Senate Number Three, Amending Republic Act Number 11223, the Universal Healthcare Act, Senator Ersito.
To the committees on Health and Demography, Migrant Workers and Finance.
Senate Number Four, Providing for the Mani Carta of Barangay Health Workers, Senator Ersito.
To the committees on Health and Demography, Local Government and Finance.
Senate Bill Number Five, Providing for the Automatic Suspension of Excise Taxes on Regular Gasoline and Leaded Premium Gasoline and Diesel. Amending Section 148 of the NIRC as amended, Senator Ersito.
To the committee on Ways and Means.
Senate Number Six, Providing for a Two Hundred Fifty Pesos across-the-board increase in the daily minimum wage of employees and workers in the private sector. Senator Ersito.
To the committee on Labor, Employment and Human Resources Development.
Senate Number Seven, Strengthening the Security of Tenure of Workers in the Private Sector. Amending Articles 106, 107, 108, 109 and 294 of PD 442. The Labor Code of the Philippines as amended, Senator Ersito.
To the committee on Labor, Employment and Human Resources Development.
Senate Number Eight, Amending, Mandating the Establishment of Agriculture Terminals and Trading Centers in Abay Province Providing Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes, Senator Ersito.
Refer to the committees on Agriculture, Food and Foreign Reform, Local Government and Finance.
Senate Bill Number Nine, Establishing a commuter-centered policy framework for transportation policy, appropriate funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Ersito.
Refer to the committees on Public Services, Public Works and Finance.
Senate Bill Number Ten, Anak Lawing and Regulating the Use of Motorcycles as Public Futility Vehicles and for Other Purposes, Senator Ersito.
To the committees on Public Services and Ways and Means.
Eleven, Amending RA 8371, the Indigenous Peoples' Rights Act of 1997, Senator Padilla.
To the committee on Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs.
Twelve, Providing for a One Hundred and Fifty Pesos Minimum Wage Increase for Employees and Workers in the Private Sector, Senator Padilla.
To the committee on Labor, Employment and Human Resources Development.
Thirteen, Abolishing the Travel Taxes on Filipinos and Nationals of Association of Southeast Asian Member States traveling to other ASEAN Member States, Senator Padilla.
To the committees on Ways and Means, Senator Isen.
Fourteen, Expanding the Grants for Distribution of Marriage, Instituting Divorce and Setting the Procedures thereof. Providing protections to the parties of the marriage and its common children, amending for the purpose EO 209 or the Family Code of the Philippines, Senator Padilla.
To the committee on Women, Children, Family Relations and Gender Equality.
Senate Bill Number Fifteen, Providing for the Medicalization of Cannabis, expanding access to medical cannabis as a means of medical treatment. Expanding research into its medicinal properties, enumerating prohibited acts and prescribing penalties there too, Senator Padilla.
To the committees on Health and Demography, Public Order and Dangerous Drugs and Finance.
Sixteen, And Act Mandating the Unified Certification of Halal Products, Processes and Services in the Philippines and for Other Purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the committees on Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs and Finance.
Senate Bill Number Seventeen, Mandating the Establishment of Muslim Prayer Rooms in All Public Offices and Establishments, Senator Padilla.
To the committees on Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs and Finance.
Eighteen, Defining and Prohibiting Political Dynasties, Providing Penalties Therefore and for Other Purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the committees on Electoral Reforms and Peoples' Participation and Constitutional Amendments and Revision of Codes.
Nineteen, Strengthening the Early Childhood Care and Development System, amending pertinent sections of RA 10410 otherwise known as the Early Years Act of 2013, appropriate funds there for, Senator Padilla.
To the committees on Basic Education, Women, Children, Family Relations and Gender Equality and Finance.
Senate Bill Number Twenty, Establishing at least one nursing home per city or province for senior citizens, appropriate funds there for and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the committees on Social Justice, Welfare and Rural Development, Government and Local Government and Finance.
Twenty-one, Regulating the Manufacturing, Importation, Sale, Distribution, Use, Advertisement, Promotion and Sponsorship of Electronic Nicotine Delivery Systems. And Electronic Non-Nicotine Delivery Systems, Heated Tobacco Products and Other Imitation Tobacco Products, repealing for the purpose RA 11900 otherwise known as the Vaporized Nicotine and Non-Nicotine Products Regulation Act, Senator Kayatano P.
To the committees on Health and Demography, Trade, Commerce and Entrepreneurship.
Twenty-two, Anak Providing a Scholarship and Return Service Program for Future Allied Health Professionals and Appropriate Funds Therefore, Senator Kayatano P.
To the committees on Higher Technical and Vocational Education, Health and Demography and Finance.
Twenty-three, Providing for Spousal and Child Support and for Other Purposes, Senator Kayatano P.
To the committees on Women, Children, Family Relations and Gender Equality and Finance.
Twenty-four, Institutionalizing Active Transport by Establishing a Safe Pathways Network of Bicycle Lanes, Walkways and Slow Streets and for Other Purposes, Senator Kayatano P.
To the committees on Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation and Future Thinking, Public Works and Finance.
Twenty-five, Regulating the Development and Use of Artificial Intelligence Systems in the Philippines, Promoting Ethical and Responsible Artificial Intelligence Innovation and Integrating Sustainability and Future Thinking in National Policy Making and for Other Purposes, Senator Kayatano P.
To the committees on Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation and Future Thinking, Science and Technology and Finance.
Twenty-six, Strengthening the Tertiary Education Subsidy, amending Section 7 of RA 10931, the Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Act, Senator Kayatano P.
To the committee on Higher Technical and Vocational Education.
Twenty-seven, Exempting from Taxes All Incentives Rewards, Bonuses, Emoluments, Donations, Gifts, Endowments and Contributions Received by National Athletes and Coaches Who Beat International Sports Competitions. Amending RA 10699, the National Athletes and Coaches Benefits and Incentives Act, Senator Kayatano P.
To the committee on Sports and Ways and Means.
Twenty-eight, Promoting Gender Equality by Amending Discriminatory Provisions Against Women. Amending Articles 14, 96, 124, 211 and 225 of the Family Code, repealing Articles 247, 333 and 34 of the Revised Penal Code and adding new articles to the RPC and for other purposes, Senator Kayatano P.
To the committees on Women, Children, Family Relations and Gender Equality and Constitutional Amendments and Revision of Codes.
Twenty-nine, Prohibiting the Possession and Use of Heated Tobacco Products and Vapor Products Including Its Consumables and Devices in All Education 29, prohibiting the possession and use of heated tobacco products and vapor products, including its consumables and devices in all educational institutions, providing penalties therefore and for other purposes, Senator Cayetano P.
To the committees on health and demography and basic education.
30, an act prohibiting online gambling in the Philippines, prescribing penalties there for and for other purposes, Senators Cayetano P and Cayetano AP.
To the committee on games and amusement.
31, an act expanding the Pantawig Familia Pilipino Program, amending RA 11310, otherwise known as the Pantawig Familia Pilipino Programs Act, Senator Laxon.
To the committees on social justice, welfare, and rural development and finance.
32, institutionalizing the participation of civil society organizations in the preparation and authorization process of the annual national budget, providing effective mechanisms therefore and for other purposes, Senator Laxon.
To the committees on electoral reforms and people's participation and finance.
33, defining and penalizing espionage and other similar offenses against national security, Senator Laxon.
To the committee on national defense and security, peace unification, and reconciliation.
34, establishing a national scholarship and return service program for students in agriculture and allied fields who are children or dependents of farmers to be known as the Kabataang Magsasakas Scholarship Act, appropriating funds there for, Senator Laxon.
To the committees on higher technical and vocational education, agriculture, food, and agrarian reform, and finance.
35, prohibiting the establishment of political dynasty, Senator Laxon.
To the committees on electoral reforms and people's participation, constitutional amendments, and revision of codes.
36, prescribing the order of succession in case of death, permanent disability, removal from office, or resignation of the president, Senator Laxon.
To the committees on constitutional amendments and revision of codes.
37, providing for voluntary membership in the government service insurance system, amending RA 8291, the GSI System Act of 1997, Senator Laxon.
To the committee on government corporations and public enterprises.
38, an act further strengthening the secrecy of bank deposits law, amending RA 1405, the banks, the secrecy of bank deposits laws amended, Senator Laxon.
To the committee on banks, financial institutions, and currencies.
39, amending Republic Act 11055, the Philippine Identification System Act of 2017, Senator Laxon.
To the committees on justice and human rights and public information and mass media.
40, regulating the use of social media platforms by minors, imposing age restrictions, providing penalties for violations thereof and for other purposes, Senator Laxon.
To the committees on science and technology, and women, children, family relations, and gender equality.
41, strengthening workers' right to security of tenure, amending articles 106, 107, 108, and 109 of Book 3 and articles 294, 295, 296, and 297 of Book 6 of PD 442, the Labor Code of the Philippines as amended, Senator Villanueva.
To the committee on labor, employment, and human resources development.
42, providing protection to freelancers and for other purposes, Senator Villanueva.
To the committee on labor, employment, and human resources development.
43, providing for a wage employment assistance program for displaced, marginalized, and vulnerable workers, institutionalizing for this purpose the Tulung Pagahanap Buoy sa Ating Disadvantaged Displaced Workers Stupad Program of the Department of Labor and Employment, appropriating funds there for and for other purposes, Senator Villanueva.
To the committees on labor, employment, and human resources development and finance.
44, establishing the standards for living wage, amending PD 442, the Labor Code of the Philippines as amended, Senator Villanueva.
To the committee on labor, employment, and human resources development.
45, expanding the use of the Legal Assistance Fund, amending section 26 of RA 8042, the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipinos Act of 1995, Senator Villanueva.
The committee on migrant workers.
46, an act enhancing the medical access of overseas Filipino workers and their families by strengthening the OFW Hospital and appropriating funds there for, Senator Villanueva.
The committees on health and demography, migrant workers, ways and means, and finance.
47, prohibiting online gambling and the placing of wagers or bets through the internet or any form of online gambling activities, providing penalties therefore and for other purposes, Senator Villanueva.
To the committee on games and amusement.
48, protecting the right of the people to freedom of religion in the Philippines guaranteed under section 5, article 3 of the 1987 Constitution and for other purposes, Senator Villanueva.
The committees on justice and human rights and cultural communities and Muslim affairs.
49, implementing the people's right to information and the constitutional policies of full public disclosure and honesty in public service, appropriating funds there for and for other purposes, Senator Villanueva.
To the committees on public information and mass media, civil service, government reorganization, and professional regulation and finance.
50, an act creating the National Independent Commission Against Corruption, appropriating funds there for and for other purposes, Senator Villanueva.
To the committees on civil service, government reorganization, and professional regulation and finance. Majority floor leader.
May I ask for a minute's suspension, Mr. President?
Session is suspended. Session is suspended.
We're ready to resume Mr. President.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. President during the break Senator Ping Laxson who's the author of Senate Bill Number Thirty-Two requested this representation to which we agree Mr. President for the change of referral and so I move that we change the referral of SB Thirty-Two from the primary committee that's supposed to handle it electoral reforms to the Committee on Finance to become the primary committee and electoral reforms as secondary committee. So move Mr. President.
Any objection?
Just Finance Mr. President. Yes, just Finance Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The referral is hereby changed to simply the Committee on Finance.
Thank you Mr. President. Mr. President at this juncture and with the permission of the body pursuant to Rule Ten, Section Thirteen in relation to Section Eighteen of the Rules of the Senate, I move that we proceed to the organization of various standing committees of the Senate through the election of the respective chairpersons. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Rodante Marcoletta as Chairperson of the Committee on Accountability of Public Officers and Investigations. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Marcoletta is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Alan Peter Cayetano as Chairperson of the Committee on Accounts. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Cayetano Allen is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Francis Pangilinan as Chairperson of the Committee on Agriculture, Food, and Agrarian Reform. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Pangilinan is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Bam Aquino as Chairperson of the Committee on Basic Education. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Bam Aquino is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Robin Hood Padilla as Chairperson of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments and Revision of Codes. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Padilla is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Aimi Marcos as Chairperson of the Committee on Cooperatives. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Marcos is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Robin Hood Padilla as Chairperson of the Committee on Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Padilla is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Pia Cayetano as Chairperson of the Committee on Energy. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Cayetano Pia is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Camille Villar as Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Villar Camille is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Sherwin Gachalian as Chairperson of the Committee on Finance. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Gachalian is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Aimi Marcos as Chairperson of the Committee on Foreign Relations. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Aimi Marcos is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Erwin Tulfo as Chairperson of the Committee on Games and Amusement. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Tulfo Erwin is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Bongo as Chairperson of the Committee on Health and Demography. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Go is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Alan Peter Cayetano as Chairperson of the Committee on Higher Technical and Vocational Education. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Cayetano Alan Peter is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Aimi Marcos as Chairperson of the Committee on Labor, Employment, and Human Resources Development. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Marcos is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Alan Peter Cayetano as Chairperson of the Committee on Justice and Human Rights. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Cayetano Allen is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator JV Ahearsito as Chairperson of the Committee on Local Government. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Ahearsito is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Rafi Tulfo as Chairperson of the Committee on Migrant Workers. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Tulfo is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senate President Protemp Jingo Estrada as Chairperson of the Committee on National Defense and Security, Peace, Unification, and Reconciliation. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Estrada is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Robin Hood Padilla as Chairperson of the Committee on Public Information and Mass Media. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Padilla is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Ronald Bato de la Rosa as Chairperson of the Committee on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator de la Rosa is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Rafi Tulfo as Chairperson of the Committee on Public Services. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Tulfo Rafi is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Mark Villar as Chairperson of the Committee on Public Works. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Villar Mark is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Erwin Tulfo as Chairperson of the Committee on Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Tulfo Erwin is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Bongo as Chairperson of the Committee on Sports. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Go is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Pia Cayetano as Chairperson of the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation, and Futures Thinking. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Cayetano Pia is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator JV Ahearsito as Chairperson of the Committee on Tourism. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Ahearsito is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Rodante Marcoletta as Chairperson of the Committee on Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Marcoletta is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Alan Peter Cayetano as Chairperson of the Committee on Science and Technology. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Cayetano Allen is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Pia Cayetano as Chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Cayetano Pia is so elected.
Mr. President, I move that we elect Senator Bongo as Chairperson of the Committee on Youth. So move Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Senator Go is so elected.
May I ask for a minute's suspension Mr. President?
Session is suspended.
Ready to resume Mr. President.
Session is resumed.
Mr. President, I move that we take up additional reference of business. So move Mr. President.
Secretary General, please proceed.
Additional reference of business, Bill Number Fifty-One, providing for a three-year specialized focus college education in the Philippines and authorizing the Commission on Higher Education to allow flexibility to reduce college academic years Senator Gachalian.
Committee on Higher Technical and Vocational Education.
Fifty-two, further amending Republic Act Seven Eight Three Six, the Philippine Teachers' Professionalization Act of nineteen ninety-four as amended by RA Nine Two Nine Three Senator Gachalian.
Civil Service, Government Reorganization, and Professional Regulation.
Fifty-three, furthering local leadership and accountability in basic education governance to achieve quality inclusive education to the twenty-first century school boards and school governing councils Senator Gachalian.
Local government, basic education, ways and means, and finance.
Fifty-four, further strengthening the incentives of private sector participation in public educational institutions by amending RA Eight Five Two Five, the Adapta School Act of nineteen ninety-eight Senator Gachalian.
Basic education, higher technical and vocational education, ways and ways and means.
Fifty-five, institutionalizing and strengthening the Arabic language and Islamic values education program in all public and private basic education schools and appropriate funds there for Senator Gachalian.
Basic education, cultural communities, and Muslim affairs, ways and means, and finance.
Fifty-six, amending Sections Twenty-Four, Thirty-Two, Thirty-Three, Thirty-Four, Fifty-Three, Fifty-Seven, One Zero Nine, One Two Three, and Two Three Six of the NIRC as amended and for other purposes Senator Gachalian.
Ways and Means.
Fifty-seven, an act regulating online gambling in the Philippines Senator Gachalian.
Games, amusement, and ways and means.
Senate Number Fifty-Eight, amending Sections Eight, One Four Four, and Two Two Five and adding a new section Two Six Three B and Two Six Three C of the NIRC of nineteen ninety-seven as amended and for other purposes Senator Gachalian.
Ways and Means.
Fifty-nine, amending Sections Twenty-Two, Twenty-Five, Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Eight, Twenty-Seven, Fifty-Four, Seventy-Three, One Zero Eight, One Zero Nine, One Two One, One Two Two, One Two Three, One Three Zero, One Seventy-Five, One Eighty to One Eighty-Five, One Eighty-Seven, One Eight Eight, One Nine Zero, One Nine Four, One Nine Five, One Nine Eight, Two Zero Four, Two Two Two, Two Five Five, Two Five Six, Two Five Seven, Two Six One, Two Six Three, Two Six Four, Two Six Six, and Two Seven Five, and repeating Sections One Seven Seven, One Eight Six, One Nine Two, and One Nine Three, all under RA Eight Four Two Four, the NIRC of nineteen ninety-seven as amended for other purposes Senator Gachalian.
Ways and Means.
Sixty, declaring one-time amnesty on all unpaid internal revenue taxes imposed by the national government for taxable year twenty twenty-four and prior year Senator Gachalian.
Ways and Means.
Sixty-one, exempting electricity sales from value-added tax, further amending Sections One Zero Eight and One Zero Nine of the NIRC as amended Senator Marcoletta.
Ways and Means in Energy.
Sixty-two, protecting Filipino consumers from arbitrary price increases of liquefied petroleum gas, amending for the purpose Sections Fourteen and Nineteen of RA Eight Four Seven Nine, the Downstream Oil Industry Regulation Act of nineteen ninety-eight Senator Marcoletta.
Energy.
Sixty-three, an act to further enhance the implementation of the lifeline rate, amending Section Seventy-Three of RA Nine One Three Six, the Electric Power Industry Reform Act of two thousand and one as amended by RA One One Five Five Two Senator Marcoletta.